All right, here we are. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for all being here. Happy New Year, I want to say, and I just do our call to order here. Let the record show that all board members are present. And before we begin, I do have a couple of announcements I'd like to make. The first one is the obvious one that we're virtual tonight. We decided to go this option out of really an abundance of caution. Community numbers are really high at this point. We felt that the virtual option is the best way to conduct our business in a way that's safe for everyone. That being said, this is not something that any of us expect to be long term, and hopefully it's really just one and done. On another note, I'd like to take a moment and congratulate everyone who participated and helped to make the winter concerts such a success. I was lucky enough to witness three of them, and from what I've been told and from what I saw, our students and staff should be very proud of how well they performed. And really especially considering it was the first time onstage for a lot of those children, and a first time in a long time for many others. So ultimately, I just want to say congratulations to all. I'm also pleased to announce that the MESSERAC Committee will begin in February, and Mr. McCann will speak more about that in our Building and Grounds Committee. And finally, my last announcement is the board would really just like to praise everyone for getting our schools open on Monday despite the COVID challenges. I for one have been teaching virtually all week, and I can't even begin to explain how badly our kids need to be in school. So I just want to say a job well done to everyone involved. At this point, we do have a discussion. There's going to be a public hearing on the SMART School Board's preliminary investment plan, Phase Two, and Ms. Pilati is going to take us through that. So if you will, Ms. Pilati?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Tussi, do we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance first?
Oh, I skipped the Pledge of Allegiance, didn't I? Yes, you know what? I thank you, Mr. Taylor. Let's do that, everybody. My fault. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I think that just proves the point of why being in person is so much more important, because it normalizes everything. So, all right, once again, back to Ms. Pilati. Thank you. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will be going over the district's final investment plan for Phase Two of the SMART Schools Bond Act. Brian, if thank you. The SMART Schools Bond Act was passed back in November 2014. The Act authorized the issuance of $2 billion of general obligation bonds to finance educational technology and infrastructure to improve learning and opportunity for students throughout the state. These funds never expire, and there are no submission deadlines. The categories of eligible capital projects include: installing high-speed broadband or wireless internet, acquiring learning technology, equipment, or facilities, constructing or enhancing educational facilities to accommodate a pre-K program, or provide instructional space to replace classroom trailers. And lastly, installing high-tech security features in school buildings and on school campuses. The West Isop School District was allocated $2,973,629 for SMART Schools Bond Act funding. In 2016, our district submitted a SMART School Investment Plan for Phase One, which consisted of a school connectivity project in the amount of $1,640,487. Phase One included upgrading the network infrastructure and implementing a Wi-Fi infrastructure for wireless access in all classrooms throughout the district. Our plan was approved by the New York State Department of Education on November 28, 2017, and the total cost incurred from Phase One of our plan was $1,137,770. We actually received our reimbursement for this amount on June 14, 2019. Therefore, the amount of funds we have remaining for Phase Two is $1,835,859. The West Isop School District will utilize the remaining $1.8 million for the installation of a security vestibule in the District Administration Office, which is located in the Beach Street Middle School. All of the West Isop School Buildings have security vestibules at their main entrances. The installation of these vestibules was completed during the 2019-20 school year and was part of the $50 million bond referendum that was approved by the community in May 2015. Security vestibules ensure that all visitors are screened before gaining access to a building. They also provide the district with more time to react should someone unwanted try to enter the building. The district is currently working with our architect, BBS, regarding the scope and design of this project to ensure that the security vestibule in front of the administration building will have the same security and safety features and standards that our other buildings currently have. As you can see on this timeline, our preliminary SMART Schools Investment Plan for Phase Two was approved at the Board of Education meeting on November 23. That plan was then posted on the district website on November 24, where it still remains. There is a link for comments on the district website, as well as an address to mail any written comments. Tonight is our hearing and presentation of the preliminary plan for Phase Two. The final SMART Schools Investment Plan for Phase Two will be approved at the Board of Education Planning Session on January 18. And the final SMART Schools Investment Plan for Phase Two will then be posted on our website and submitted to the New York State Department of Education for review and approval on January 19. As I mentioned, any of the community members or residents who would like to submit any feedback can do so on our district website. There is a link under the announcements to the SMART School Investment Plan for Phase Two, as well as a link to provide any comments or feedback. There is also the option to send in any handwritten feedback to our district office to the address listed here. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Pilati. So at this time, we have not received any question submissions regarding any agenda items. So we'll move into the approval of minutes. So I need a motion, please, is needed to approve the minutes of the December 9, 2021 regular meeting?
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to personnel with Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. I may have a motion for the approval of the personnel agenda as listed in your backup.
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? That's all we have, right? Okay. Curriculum update, Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. May I please have a motion to accept the proposed course title change, Music Technology and Innovation, to Music Technology and Innovation Lab?
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
The current uptick in COVID cases is putting a temporary strain on the district's ability to provide homebound instruction to students that are isolated or quarantined because of the virus. Starting today, we pivoted to a modified hybrid model that will allow for quarantined and isolated students at home to observe classroom instruction via their one-to-one devices and classroom webcams. Those students will be encouraged to attend extra help upon their return to school, and any student that requires additional support thereafter will be accommodated. The district will return to the homebound instruction model for quarantined or isolated students that was established at the beginning of the school year as soon as it is feasible to do so, and will be reassessed on a weekly basis as guidelines related to COVID are ever-changing. At the Board of Ed meeting in December, concern was noted by residents about alleged harassment of LGBTQ students and what the district planned to do to address this issue. As a follow-up, I met with Dr. Bridgeman and Mr. Arini, Director of School Counseling, on December 15. We reviewed data related to behavior incidents involving the LGBT community at the high school since the start of the school year and how those incidents were addressed according to the District Code of Conduct. It was determined that after the December break, Mr. Arini would meet with the advisor of the GSA to discuss his thoughts in regard to possible issues impacting our students and ascertain suggestions on areas that may have room for improvement. It should be noted that there was regular ongoing communication between Dr. Bridgeman, Mr. Arini, and the GSA advisor. On December 18, Dr. Bridgeman then attended a GSA meeting. Students spoke very openly about some of the challenges they are facing. After the meeting, Dr. Bridgeman did follow up with staff members and students where it was warranted. Dr. Bridgeman did assure the students at this meeting that the staff is there to support them. He encouraged them to make sure they are speaking to a trusted adult or a staff member or a teacher if there are bullying or harassment issues that we need to know about so that they can be immediately addressed as per the Code of Conduct. The students were very appreciative of Dr. Bridgeman's time at that afternoon, and he looks forward to attending meetings in the future. Dr. Bridgeman, Mr. Arini, and I have a follow-up meeting scheduled to discuss future steps. In addition, the recent Panorama SCL survey results were carefully reviewed to ensure that concerns expressed by all students were and are being addressed. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Can I just, can I just jump in for one second before you move on? Thank you. I just want to note here that, you know, we need to focus more on not just the disciplinary involvement and action once the incidents happen and tracking down, you know, the perpetrators, if you will, or, you know, the people involved and making sure that, you know, they're getting disciplined and what have you. You know, it's a bigger, larger issue, as we all know, and the only way to really shine the light on it and get that lens focused in the right way is through education, right? It's through that social-emotional learning piece that we've been talking about that unfortunately has been a little politicized here. But I do think that we really need a concerted effort on all stakeholders, the community, and the parents and the students to understand what kind of culture we need to be embracing and supporting across all school grades, from kindergarten all the way up. So, you know, I would be interested in seeing if we could establish some kind of, you know, district-wide committee that's going to focus and bring those players together, you know, parents, PTA, community members, whoever is, you know, interested in this topic to brainstorm some ideas, whether it be, you know, special programs brought in for the students or just something through guidance, social work, something like that, that is going to really take us back to the place where we once were, where I feel that we were a little bit more accepting of everybody. Everybody.
Okay, and that's what we are hoping will come out of the meetings that Mr. Arini and Dr. Bridgeman are going to have with the advisor of the GSA and the next steps that we can proactively take to raise awareness, just as you're speaking to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So all set, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Yes, all right, great. Okay, let's move on to our report of the board committees, and let's go with Mr. Antonello and the Education Committee.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Tussi. Good evening to everybody. The Education Committee met on Tuesday, January 4, the Beach Street Library. All the board members were in attendance except Mrs. LaRosa. Administrators present included Superintendent Burns, Assistant Superintendent Dawn Morrison, Assistant Superintendent Lisa Pilati. The first item discussed was the modified short-term hybrid instruction model set up by the district. This was done in response to the excessive absences of students and teachers due to COVID and COVID procedures. Cameras were turned on in the classrooms to deal with the increased demand, and the situation will be reassessed next week, January 14. The second item discussed was the panoramic survey for grades six through eight. A letter was sent home explaining the survey, and the dates will be administered. Questions are posted on the district website. The purpose is to assess the social-emotional well-being of the kids. The third item discussed was the cancellation of the fundamentals training for teachers next week due to all the trainers having COVID. The elementary school report committee will also meet next week. The hope is to have a new report card designed by next school year. The fourth item discussed was the rescheduling of a DEI meeting with Tracy Edwards from Bosse's for the board. The fifth item that was discussed was the need to modify 40 hours of community service required for high school students. It's also in light of COVID disruptions. I think we're noticing a theme here. The sixth item, lastly, was the discussion about the midterms. And at this point, it seems that the midterms will be canceled for this year. The meeting adjourned at 7:20 PM.
All right, thank you, Mr. Antonello. And on to the Finance Committee with Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. The committee met on January 4. Committee members present were myself and Peter McCann. Board members in attendance, Ms. Antonello, Ms. Brown, Mr. Comptel, Mr. Tussi. Administrators present, Superintendent Burns, as well as Ms. Pilati and Ms. Morrison. The purpose of the meeting is to review the warrants for the month, discuss pertinent fiscal matters. Meeting was called to order at 7:15. The reports the board received, or the committee received, the following reports: the Treasurers' Report for November for School District Funds and Extracurricular Funds, the financial statements for November, the Internal Claims Audit Report for December, the System Manager Audit Trail for December 1 to December 21, 2021, the payroll certification for the pay period 1210 and 1223. They were all accepted by the committee. The committee also received and reviewed the warrants. We discussed the following board agenda finance items: approval of budget transfers and approval of donations of various aluminum sheet plate and steel bars for the West Isop High School School Engineering and Technology, valued at approximately $1,500. Approval of surplus damaged furniture and materials at MESSERA, the approval of 2021-2022 Special Education Contracts for Babylon and Hefhallow Hills School Districts, approval of 2021-2022 Health Services Contracts for East Isop Schools for two students. We also had a discussion item. The Office of the State Controller has finished their first audit area of testing, which was fund, balance, and reserves, and will be meeting with the central administrators on January 19 to discuss the findings. The second area of testing will be Medicaid reimbursements, and the OSC will be issuing two separate reports for each area tested. The meeting adjourned at 7:22.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McGinnis. On to Building and Grounds with Mr. McCann.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Tussi. The Building and Grounds Committee met on Tuesday, January 4, at 7:45 PM. All board members, with the exception of Ms. LaRosa, were in attendance. Administrators in attendance were Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Morrison, and Mrs. Pilati, along with Mr. Bossy from the Building and Grounds Group. So a lot of projects going on in the Building and Grounds. I'll start with some of the construction projects that are in the works. The Beach Street Generator was sent to the state for approval. We're waiting to hear back from that. The fencing on Montuck Highway, we've got, which came out great, I believe. Still working on some finishing touches. There's some COVID delays with some raw materials, but that should be finished by the end of the month. We are potentially looking at continuing that fencing along the front of the high school, in front of the kind of Paul J. Blue School. We'll put that up for discussion as we move forward. I think that would be a positive. We're looking at ACs in the cafeteria. We're using grant money to have that done. Hope to be that done for May. So I know we've had a lot of talk about air conditioning overall in the entire district. So we're making progress. ACs in the cafeterias hope to be done by May. The next step would be ACs in the auditorium, again with grant money. We're working on a proposal installed by the summer, hopefully working in September when we come back. We are looking at exploring and options for ACs in all the rooms, and that's still in exploratory phase. So we'll have more details and dollars associated with that later in the year. The fitness center in the high school, the renovation, should be done during the February break, barring any delays, but we should have that done. Paul J. Blue parking lot, we're also exploring expanding and repaving that. We do have the MESSERA Committee. All of the committee members were notified that they were accepted for the committee last month. We will have our first committee meeting, again barring any COVID-related delays, on February 16. The district has employed Kathy Blackburn. She's an independent facilitator who has experience in facilitating projects like this. It was a recommendation through Bosse's. We've interviewed her as a board. We feel an independent facilitator will help bring out all of the options that are available. The role of the committee is to do the homework, look at all the options, and make recommendations to the board. And that's what the plan is, starting with the meeting on the 16th. Notifications will go out for that. We're looking to do two sessions, one in half of the group in the AM, half of the group in the PM. But look for that if you are on that committee, and we'll have more information on that as we go along. We did look at currently, taking a look at all the indoor facility permits that we've got out there with all the outside groups. As we all know, our main goal here is the health and safety of the students and all of the staff. With the COVID surge, we're taking a look at the indoor facilities. We're looking to postpone rather than cancel events. That's our mission here, to keep all events live. The indoor permits that we're looking at, we've got some big activities coming up. We've got some dance programs and the indoor soccer tournament. We are looking at making sure that, if possible, to hold those events, that there be hold, follow the safety protocols that'll keep us safe. We have to have, you know, continued discussion on that as we take a look at all the programs. Because again, our main mission is keep the students in the schools, keep the schools open, especially during this most recent surge of COVID. The solar panel project is underway. We are, we've got Bayview, Okinok, and Manitec. The panels are up. We're just waiting to connect that. Then we are starting with the middle schools, and then we'll work our way to the high school. Again, we're doing that so that we're not interfering with any teaching time that goes on. So we're trying to do that, but that project is moving along nicely, and that'll give a net, a net positive to the district over the life of those panels. That's what we have from the Building and Grounds, and I know there's a lot there. So if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you very much for that detailed report, Mr. McCann. Before I move into the Special Ed Committee with Ms. Brown, I think Mr. Antonello just wanted to make a correction on something he said. Ms. Antonello?
Yeah, I just, I mentioned that the fundamental was going to be, the fundamentals training was going to be canceled next week. I meant foundations, not fundamentals, as in reading my notes is fundamental, and I messed that up to be foundations.
That's okay. I forgot the pledge, so we all make mistakes. It's okay. All right, thank you. And like I said, on to Ms. Brown with the Special Education Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. And now for my lengthy update. The Committee on Special Education met on January 5, 2022 via teleconference at 8:30 AM. In attendance were myself, board member Ron McGinnis, administrators Dawn Morrison and Jean Dowling. We discussed special education placements and the fact that planning is underway for annual reviews. The meeting adjourned at 8:45 AM. Thank you.
Trying to mute myself. There we go. Thank you, Mrs. Brown. And finally, our last committee report is Health and Wellness Committee with, once again, Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Health and Wellness Committee met virtually, as we have been doing, on Tuesday, January 4, at 9:30. Members were present were Mr. Haran, Mr. Robano, Ms. Russo, Mrs. Canestra, Mrs. Bereline, Mrs. Marshall, Mrs. Curly, myself, Mrs. Steinwells, Mrs. Elefante, Mrs. Sepe, Mrs. Fogarty, Mrs. Voris, and Mr. Soto. We discussed the newsletter that's coming out. We're looking for members to submit articles for the anticipated February mailing. So if there are any other topics that are out there broadly, if you'd like to do the, you can get, email those to Tim Haran. He is coordinating that. We're putting out the Health and Wellness Newsletter. We're anticipating a lot of, you know, social and emotional articles in that, obviously with the effects of COVID. So we want to make sure that we address what we have, along with cellphone use. So any other topics that may, please feel free to email him. We're looking at a Spring into Wellness event, tentatively scheduled for March 7. We held this two years ago. I attended. I thought it was a great event. We had, it was open for students and parents. It was mostly K through eighth grade. And we had different sections that we went to. We had a mindfulness seminar. We did art therapy. We did music. We did yoga. It was a great activity for the parents and students to get together on an evening and really enjoy some of the mindfulness activities that we have. So we're looking to do that on March 7. The District YPS I Love You Day members supported a $500 donation to the High School Senate to purchase YPS I Love You Day flag poles to be displayed through the community. The Essential Pantry Needs is up and running at each school. We can contact the social worker at any time for information for anyone who is needing essential pantry needs. The New York State Department of Mental Health Crisis Text Line, 52741741, to chat with a health professional, is open. And the COVID hotline is at 311. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 8, 9:30 AM. That's his virtual meeting. So if anyone wants to be involved, again, you can email Tim Haran and be part of that group. So thanks for, we'll see you at the next meeting, and the meeting adjourned to 10:30.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCann. Let's move into financial matters and business items with Ms. Pilati.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Treasurers' Report for the month of November had a beginning balance of $30,904,019.51 and an ending balance for the month of $49,582,709.63. May I have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4115 through 4127 in the General Fund and transfer 4120 in the Capital Fund?
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
May I have a motion for the approval of surplus damaged furniture and materials from the MESSERA School?
Still moved?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Tussi, just on that point, just a clarification point, that we had discussed this at the meeting on Tuesday. A lot of that is were supplies that were brought when we emptied out some of the classrooms to make room for space during the COVID time, to make social distancing. So a lot of that was some older equipment that was currently in schools that we moved to MESSERA. So that's kind of what that equipment's about.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McCann. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
May I have a motion for the approval of a Health Services Contract with East Isop Union Free School District in the amount of $2,051.96?
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
May I have a motion for the approval of 2021-22 Special Education Contracts with Babylon and Hefhallow Hills Central School Districts?
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
May I have a motion for the approval of a resolution related to the donation of various aluminum sheets, plates, and steel bars from CPI Arrow Structures, Inc., that was donated to the West Isop High School Engineering Technology Department and has a value of approximately $1,500?
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pilati. The President's Report, I really said everything in the announcements that I would report on, but I just want to add that I was really happy to hear Ms. Morrison's report about the follow-up with the student harassment. I'd also like to thank Ms. LaRosa for her comments and really with what she said, and I would second her sentiments. I think there were some good ideas there, and I'm happy to hear that we are trying to make any corrections or fix things or make Uh, and I'm happy to hear that we are trying to uh make any corrections or fix things or make things better for for everybody. Uh, with that being said, I'd like to introduce Ms. Burns with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. I would like to welcome everyone back and wish you all a Happy New Year. Uh, much has gone on in the last few weeks, in in this last week alone. Today, the district received revised guidance from the Suffolk County Department of Health regarding isolation and quarantine of students and staff. Um, you may recall that the CT uh CDC makes recommendations which the State Department of Health can or may not choose to adopt. Um, once the state DOH adopts specific guidance, then um Suffolk County evaluates that guidance and determines whether it is appropriate for our region. It's a big state, so of course, each local department of health is charged with caring for um, you know, its stakeholders. Those stakeholders being uh the towns and communities in the region. So um tomorrow, everyone will receive a parent square message. Uh, in essence, this updated guidance reduces an isolation period for positive cases to five days from ten for both students and staff as long as certain conditions are met. Um, and and those conditions are very, very specific, not the least of which is um, you know, the wearing of a well-fitted mask, proper physical distancing, et cetera, all of those things that we've been implementing in our classrooms. Quarantine guidance has also changed, but it's based upon vaccination booster status. So we will be implementing a change to these protocols commensurate with um the county guidelines. And we will um put it in place on Monday, January tenth for our students. That will give us a little bit of time to organize, uh determine who might be eligible, uh because again, not everybody would be eligible. Um, but we're hoping for tomorrow um to be able to do that. Therefore, if your child was directed to isolate for ten days recently, but has completed five days by Monday and meets the other requirements, um, which I will articulate in my parent's square message, um, not coughing, fever-free, no runny nose. They may return to school um on Monday or earlier than originally anticipated. So we'll get that information out to you tomorrow with the specifics. Surveillance testing is also a tool we are hopeful will prevent some of the transition uh transmission of COVID nineteen in our school buildings. The parents of approximately three thousand of all forty-one hundred students have taken advantage of obtaining the test kits thus far. If you have not already requested and picked up your home testing kit, you may do so at your earliest convenience. In our memo, we did say they would be available in schools through tomorrow, but your homeschool uh will have those testing kits all through next week as well until they're gone. And I would just remind everybody to, when you make the request, uh, the kits will be delivered to the homeschool of your youngest child in the district. Uh, bear in mind that the district has been allocated one kit per enrolled student. So until we receive additional kits, we cannot honor requests for replacements or second kits. We do realize that some of our residents have students in private schools or in other placements uh throughout the island. And we did explain to um, you know, those who have provided us with the kits, that being Eastern Suffolk BOSI's in this case, that there are other students for whom we want to make sure they receive test kits. They're not members of our, they're not enrolled. They are members of our district. They're not enrolled in our district schools. But certainly, we want to make sure the kids get into their hands as well. So we're looking to obtain additional kits in that regard. I think it should be coming from BOSI's directly to those other um school district entities. And finally, I'm certain you all have noted um that the weather forecast for tomorrow currently calls for four to six inches of snow, all of which is supposed to school uh fall, just as our students and staff will be arriving. So the district will operate on a delayed opening, a two-hour delayed opening tomorrow. Uh, you may recall that in the district's adopted twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar, there are two emergency closing days built in. Therefore, should we need to close tomorrow or any future day, we will have a traditional snow day for the first two closures. But for now, tomorrow, we will have a two-hour delayed opening, and we've sent that apparent square message and emails in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
All right. Thank you uh very much.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Can I just ask a question? And maybe I missed it. I'm not sure because my phone is blowing up with the closure. Um, did we say how many students or or um learning community are out with COVID? Do we have a a percentage of of?
Yeah, so we've been of students. Um, we've been keeping track on any particular day. It's running between fifty and twenty percent out. Absent, not as high as we would have anticipated.
And the staff?
Um, I would ask um, Mr. Taylor. Again, I don't know, maybe seventy people. We we've had more people out on Fridays in May and June and December, certain times of year than right now, but um but this is more widespread because it's affecting every every group, our custodial staff, our uh aides TAs. Um, Mr. Taylor, could you speak to that? I know you have the most current information.
Uh, yes, we have about um, excuse me, one second. Approximately about fifteen percent of our staff is out.
Okay, and um, Mr. Taylor, you're able to, of course, cover classes, our sub list that we've been growing it all year.
Um, so we're able to. We have had no issues with uh with having subs available or covering classes um at the secondary level with with other teachers. So we've been able to keep our buildings open safely.
Thank you. Great.
And I I would like to credit our administrative and teaching um educators for stepping up and making sure that that happens internally. I think we're in a better place than a lot of other districts, so we're very grateful for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you again, Ms. Burns. Uh, at this time, we're gonna uh move into the unique uh public speaking uh questions and answers.
Mr. Tussi, I'm sorry. Before you do that on the agenda, there's notice and reminders for um other board member information. If I could just take a moment. Um, I would just like to um express um my apologies for missing um a couple of meetings in this past. I've been contacted by a number of community members um asking why. Um, and so and also expressing good wishes to my husband, who underwent some um heart surgery in early December, which kind of took me out of the game because my focus was making sure that everything was good there. And I wanted to thank those community members sincerely um for asking about him all as well. And hopefully, I will not have to miss many more meetings for the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we all uh hope that your husband is having a speedy recovery.
He's doing well. You might see him walking down Udal Road. He's hitting the three mile mark every day, so.
I hope so. All right.
I can wave to him.
Very good. Will do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tussi, I I know everyone's mentioned it. I'd like to also mention thanks to everyone for getting those schools open on Monday. I know. I think I said a few meetings ago that, you know, in the in this COVID time, it's, you know, it's every, it's almost like every community for itself, and this community really stands up and gets the kids back to school where they belong and where they need to be. You know, we know the remote teaching is not ideal for anyone, so testament to everyone, the teachers, administration, everyone who's been pitched in on this because uh it's not true. As Mrs. Burn says, it's not true. You know, you look at what's going on in even this city of Chicago. We're not that. We're open and thank you. Thank you from my family, my kids. This is where they need to be and uh it's been a crazy week and we'll end with a snowstorm, but we're back and I thank everyone for that.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Very good. All right. So we had uh several questions that were emailed in, uh, and I'd like to uh read the questions uh and who they were from. So Carmela Camino, uh, she emailed. Next week, all homebound students will have the option to turn on virtual learning during their quarantine time. Thanks for opening this platform for our kids. My question here is, why can't this be done moving forward? Don't you feel some form of teaching is better than nothing at all? Is this pushback from teachers? Uh, Mrs. Morrison, do you want to take that one?
Absolutely. So as has been affirmed throughout the past two years dealing with COVID, students learn best when they are physically present in school. And I think, Mr. Tussi, you alluded to that earlier in regard to your own own situation there. Um, in the absence of that, we have found that the best way for our students to learn is to receive small group or direct homebound instruction from our teachers. Thus far this year, the district has been fortunate, um, thanks to the tireless efforts of our staff to be able to provide that small group or one-to-one homebound instruction for students that are quarantined or isolated. Um, in most cases, many of the students have had the opportunity to work with their own teachers. This has proven to be much more effective for students than viewing the classroom environment via the cameras and the one-to-one devices, and it also reduces disruptions to classroom instruction. Um, so as noted in the curriculum and instruction update, the district plans to return to uh the model proven to be most successful and effective for our students, um, which is a small group or one-to-one homebound instruction. As soon as we have the ability to do so, we're just finding that that is much more effective um than having the cameras on in the classrooms.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Morrison.
Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Camino also asked another question I have is the new hires of subs slash student teachers. Are they all certified? Uh, they all certify teachers. How are these candidates vetted out? What qualifications are required here? Uh, Mr. Taylor, I'm going to turn to you on to that one.
Uh, yes, Mr. Tussi. Um, no, all of the teachers that we have just hired as subs, all the substitute teachers we have just hired, they are not all certified teachers. Um, due to the shortage of subs uh across New York, the State Education Department changes regulations to allow districts to hire individuals with high school diplomas. If the district has done a good faith effort, to hire certified teachers. Um, we have done a good faith have effort. Uh, we have an open posting on the district website and on the online application system for educators. Uh, we have hired all certified teachers who have applied to the district. Um, this most recent group of subs uh we hired are all enrolled in four-year college programs. Uh, many are majoring in education. Um, all candidates' resumes are reviewed by me, and I meet with all candidates before they go before the board for approval. Um, no sub or any uh employee works in a classroom or in this district until they have had their fingerprints cleared by the state education board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, and her last question is this Miss Mrs. Camino again, uh, if a test to stay protocol comes into play, I will be withdrawing my kids from school. No reason to test healthy children. So it's not really a question as much as it's a statement. Uh, and I think, Ms. Burns, you might want to uh respond to this one?
Yeah, so the current test to stay guidelines have been very confusing to some people, and they only affect students and staff who are identified as close contacts in the school setting. We have very, very, very few people identified as close contacts in the school setting. Um, because our educators have done a really terrific job of ensuring that everyone is aware of and following the protocols. So this um guidance, this protocol will affect very few of our students and staff, and it would really be done on a case-by-case basis. It's not a broad-based solution to anything.
Okay, thank you. Um, this next question, it's actually a series of questions. I'm going to read them all. Uh, they're from uh Mr. Marmo. Uh, I'm going to read them all. I think they're all kind of connected. Uh, and then again, Ms. Burns, I'm going to direct these to you. Uh, can a resident place a proposition on the May ballot? What is the procedure and deadline to do so? What is the scope of what qualifies as a proposition? Said another way, what is permitted and what is not permitted? And what, if any involvement, will the district have in this process? Is there any documentation in place with the district or the New York State Department of Education uh that would allow so?
Okay, so um, yes, a resident can place a proposition on the May ballot subject to school board review. Um, to do so, the pro- protocols for submitting a proposition for consideration by the voters is expressed in District Policy twelve sixty, one two six zero. And petitions relating to an annual election must be filed not later than sixty days preceding the election at which the proposition is to be voted upon. Um, the basic parameters, um, the proposition needs to be feasible, uh, unambiguous. The purpose must fall within the power of the voters um and specify an amount if an expenditure of money would be required, and if it does require funding and the expenditure of money would force the um uh proposed budget to exceed the tax levy cap, the budget vote would then require approval by sixty percent of the voters. Um, the school board makes the determination about whether a particular proposition is appropriate for placement on the ballot. And um, any information can be provided upon request to the district clerk, but I cannot speak to what is available um through the New York State Department of Education. I hope that answers all the questions.
Yeah, sounds like it did. Have we ever had a resident um request of uh the proposition?
Yeah, we had a couple of years ago, we had um, they changed the voting uh the way we vote on board members. So they did a petition. They had to get a certain number of signatures um to it never, right now, it's um an at-large vote where you have three seats up and six people are running. The top three vote-getters get a vote. So they changed it to be that at-large. It used to be uh you you owned the seats. So somebody would run against me, somebody would run against against Mr. McCann, and you would be one-to-one. So there was a group of um uh community members who wanted more of an at-large so that, you know, you didn't have that, I guess, direct competition. I don't know. So they um did a petition. They got the signatures, which then allowed them to put that proposition on the ballot. It got approved on the ballot, and then the next cycle of elections, that's how we now have at-large voting. Correct?
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Uh, all right. Question uh number three came from Farren Phillips. Uh, I was wondering if you could clarify for me the reason as to why the Board of Ed meeting was suddenly switched to a virtual meeting? Uh, yeah, I guess that was something I addressed uh in the announcements, and um I'll just to review what I said. It was really just an abundance of caution. Uh, it is not something that we want to continue long term. We're hoping, as I said, it's just one and done. But the the numbers have been so high, uh, we just thought that this would be uh an opportunity to keep everyone healthy and safe uh and keep our schools open, which is what our number one goal is. And our final question uh came from Catherine Abantello. Uh, I'd like, I would like to begin by thanking the board for making the wise decision to hold this month's meeting virtually amid the latest Omicron wave. Following up of the concerns I voiced during last meeting, I would like to know specifically what steps the board and or administration have taken to address them since uh that time. Uh, that's exactly what uh Mrs. Morrison addressed in her curriculum update. Um, I, Mrs. Morrison, is there anything else you want to add or do you just? I think you said everything in in the curriculum update, and uh I thought it really covered all her concerns.
The only thing I'd like to add is that Dr. Bridgman, Mr. Arini and I plan on meeting again next week um so that we can continue our plan of action going forward and do some of the things that Mrs. LaRosa had um alluded to when she spoke.
Okay. Um, I just want to take another minute just to wish everybody a Happy New Year. We hope you uh had a a very nice time with your families. Hope you uh celebrated the New Year. Uh, and we're looking forward to really doing what we do best, which is just, uh, you know, maintain the education system here and and keep our kids in school and keep them safe and keep them happy and keep everything going. So hopefully, uh, we could start moving in that direction or at least continue. Uh, and let's hope these numbers start to go down. So with that being said, uh, I'd like uh a motion to adjourn to executive decision uh session where uh the board will discuss personnel negotiations and litigation.
Done. Done.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hello, everybody. Uh, we have reconvened back to public uh session, and there is a motion on the table. Ms. Pilati, you'll make that motion?
Yes. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the West Iceup Union Free School District hereby suspends with pay the employee reference in executive session as employee A effective January seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Done. Done.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And that is the only uh table of business that we have. So at this time, I'd like to motion to adjourn.
Done. Done.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Yeah.